Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom, with login and call-in information posted on our website. The meeting will be conducted by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded, and Robert's rules will apply. To offer a comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, please use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address to the moderator. Your request to speak will then be passed on to staff, and the chairman will be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone and speak, and then please mute your microphone when you finish. East Hemphill Township's public comments rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting-minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment when non-agenda items can be addressed. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. We now will move on to our first agenda item. Please join me for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our second agenda item, as I believe everyone here is aware, today is Peace Officers' Memorial Day, a special day that honors our East Hemphill Police Officers, as well as police officers everywhere. Somewhere every day, police officers pin on their shields and walk out the door of their home, rushing into harm's way to keep the rest of us safe. For most, being a police officer is more than what they do, it is who they are. Our Peace Officers Memorial Day and during Police Week, we recognize the incredible courage of our nation's police officers and honor the fallen heroes whose ultimate sacrifice we can never repay. As the board's contribution to Police Week, we have a National Police Week proclamation, which I'd like to address. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of East Hemphill Township Police Department play an essential role in the safeguarding that right and freedoms of the citizens of East Hemphill Township, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of the police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression and intimidation. Whereas the East Hemphill Township Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors call upon all citizens of East Hemphill Township and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 13 through 19th, 2024 as Police Week, with the appropriate ceremonies in which all our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all our citizens and residents. We ask that God bless and keep safe all police officers everywhere, especially those who work to better our East Hemphill Township community. And we also express in a special way our thanks and gratitude to the wives and family members of our police officers who support their work and effort 24/7. We call upon all citizens of East Hemphill Township to observe Wednesday, May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of the duty. Duly ordained and adopted this 15th day of May, 2024 by the Board of Supervisors of East Hemphill Township, Thomas Bennett, Chairman. With that, we'll go to the chief.
Before we get into the awards, I want to take a moment and recognize police officers in general. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in line of duty for the safety and protection of others. If you would, please join me in a moment of silence to honor the memory of those officers and the families and friends they left behind. Thank you. Tonight, we will present the annual Community Policing Award and Officer of the Year Award. In addition, we just want to mention that throughout the last year, numerous other awards have been presented in some form for outstanding performance. The circumstances ranged from merit citations to life-saving awards, to unit citations for major incidents, which certainly we have not been short of the last few years, especially last year, seems to be our new norm these days. The group standing here, East Hemphill Township Police Department, were fortunate enough to have some of the most dedicated, talented, and professional police officers anywhere. Thank all of you for your service and your dedication day in and day out. In addition to thanking you, I'd like to thank the family members that are here tonight. None of this would be possible without the support and a strong family network that the officers have at home, so thank you to all the family. First, we'd like to present the Community Policing Award. This is awarded annually to an officer who developed community partnerships, identified and solved problems, implemented new initiatives and programs, or promoted meaningful results from partnerships, problem-solving skills within the community. I'm going to let Lieutenant Polley take over from here.
Good evening. This year, that's okay, I'm used to it. This year, Officer Stephen Armstrong is the recipient of the award. Steve Armstrong has been an East Hemphill Township Police Officer since 2016. Throughout his career, Officer Armstrong has proven himself to be a professional, diligent, and caring officer. Officer Armstrong was involved in a number of community events this past year, to include Boy Scout tours, Toys for Tots, trunk-or-treat events, high school sports, Biggs in Blue, and he's also a certified child car seat installer. Officer Armstrong often stops and talks with kids while on patrol and shows them his cruiser. Officer Armstrong has on multiple occasions helped motorists by changing their tires, has filled gas tanks with his own money, and has done other subtle, kind gestures for people that have gone, that have been noted. Officer Armstrong takes pride in his profession and is a great representation of our agency. Steve, please come forward and accept your award.
Congratulations. The next award is our Officer of the Year Award. The annual Kenneth Nightingale Officer of the Year Award honors Kenny's legacy. Kenny left us all too soon and is greatly missed. We'd like to thank his mom, Marlene, who comes every year to be with us to honor Kenny. The award is presented to the officer regardless of rank or assignment, who best exemplifies the department's sworn personnel during the year. The selection is based upon professionalism and exemplary service. Every officer should feel worthy of being selected based on his or her own performance during the previous year, but only one officer is chosen.
Good evening. The recipient of this year's Kenneth Nightingale Officer of the Year Award is Officer James Pete. Officer Pete is a well-rounded, 11-year veteran. Officer Pete is thorough, he is detailed, he is organized, and he is self-motivated. Jim is a team player who assists others and is relied upon for advice. Jim became a field training officer in 2023, and he looks forward to passing on his experience to new officers. Officer Pete regularly works patrol overtime, traffic-related overtime, and he also participated in a number of community events where he represented the agency. Two notable instances and arrests that Officer Pete was a part of in 2023 included a vehicle theft where he was able to stop and arrest a suspect who had stolen a luxury vehicle from the 2800 block of Harrisburg Pike, and another vehicle theft in progress at the Arby's Restaurant at 3005 Columbia Avenue. Officer Pete quickly located and stopped the stolen vehicle as entering the Sunoco Gas Station at the intersection of Marietta Avenue and Rorstown Road. The suspects jumped out of the stolen vehicle and ran, but left the vehicle in gear. Officer Pete's fast reactions allowed him to get into the stolen vehicle before it drifted into the gas pumps or into traffic. By stopping the car, Officer Pete made the safety of others a priority, as he opposed to focusing on apprehending the suspects and consequently making the arrest. Additionally, in January of this last year, Officer Pete received praise from the Hemphill School District for an incident he dealt with at the Landisville Primary Center. In February of last year, a man and his girlfriend were also involved in a very serious car accident. The man reached out to our agency, discussed the severity of his girlfriend's injuries, which included two compound fractures to her femur. The man spoke at length regarding Officer Pete, how he treated him with the utmost respect and empathy. The man stated, and I quote, "He made me feel like his purpose was to care for me, and instilled in him that the police were there to protect and serve." The man continued to state that he would never forget Officer Pete, wanted to make sure his supervisors knew what kind of officer he is. April of last year, we received an email from Lancaster County Crisis Intervention regarding one of the best involuntary commitment petitions they had ever seen. Officer Pete completed this petition. Also in September of last year, we received an email from a supervisor for Penn State Health Lifeline regarding Officer Pete's commendable efforts on a medical call. Finally, November of last year, we received an email from Dr. Rehart from Penn State Health, who was very complimentary of Officer Pete and specifically how he spoke and represented her agency at a community event. For all these reasons and above, Officer James Pete is a 2023 Officer of the Year. Jim?
In addition to a plaque, certificate, and a pin for Officer Pete, Finch Jeweler has also been a longtime supporter of our awards program. They're no longer in the township, but Jessica Finch, every year, continues to donate a watch of our choice that we feel the Officer of the Year would like, donates it to our agency free of charge. That concludes the award ceremony. Thank you.
Make a motion. Okay. Okay, well, thank you, Chief, and congratulations. Appreciate not only the award winners here, but all of our officers. You do a great job in the township, taking care of us, and we love you guys, really, we do. Okay, with that, I'll hear a motion to approve the National, 2024 National Police Week proclamation from East Hemphill Township.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. All right, is there anyone here that would like to speak from the board?
Yes, I would like to make a few comments. So... In recent years, law enforcement has come under attack nationwide. And it's been very unfair. You guys have been unfairly criticized, mocked on a national level, not locally here in East Hemphill, but on a national level. So what can we do about it? We can do what we're here doing tonight. We can stand up and show our support for these men and women who serve us every day. And I would just say, when you look at our officers, I submit to you, they are more than just a person in uniform. Their husbands, their fathers, their wives, their mothers, they are our neighbors, they're the person that sits next to us in church or at a football game, they're our league coaches, they're good citizens who care about their community and our friends. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You have our love and respect. You guys do an awesome job, and gals.
Okay, with that, let's get you guys back on duty. So, having a first, Mr. Wigglesworth with a... Well, we got a call for the vote. We're gonna, I'm calling for the vote on the proclamation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. Awesome, Scott.
That's okay, we're still good.
Yes.
Typically, we do a picture with the awards before they leave.
Yeah, let's.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, let's do that.
If the audience will give us just a minute, we just want to grab a picture with the award winners before they leave.
That's gonna be right there in the black boxes of your ass.
Okay. All right, we'll give a, we'll take another minute or two here to clear the room, and then we'll move on.
Lieutenant Chase, will you close the door behind you when you leave? Lieutenant Chase, will you close the door behind you when you leave, please? And here you thought they were all here for your hearings. The whole audience. You got a couple people left.
Okay, next up on our agenda is a hearing for a zoning text amendment to allow a kennel as a use by right in the Community Business Center District and provide for additional use regulations specific to kennels. Do we have a representative of the applicant here this evening?
Yes, good evening. Claudia Shank from McNeese, Wallace &amp; Nurk on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to review the application for us?
I can do that, yes. So, as I mentioned, Claudia Shank with McNeese on behalf of the applicant, which is K9 Lancaster LLC. I'm joined here tonight by Kevin Tennant, who is a representative of K9 Resorts, and by Haman Anand and Richie Dillon, who are both the franchisees that would be operating the proposed K9 Resort location in East Hemphill Township. I'm gonna pause for a moment if I could and hand out some packets of a slideshow that we're going to go through with you this evening. If you turn to the first page in your packet, you'll see an aerial map of the property that is the catalyst for this application. It's a one-acre tract of land that's located at 121 Centerville Road. It's in your Community Business Center or CBC zoning district. It's improved with a 7,917 square foot building and related parking facilities. The building that is the subject of this application was actually on the market for about a year and four months before K9 came in and entered into a purchase agreement to buy this property. So just to give you a little bit of a context of sort of the underutilized nature of that building and the need really for redevelopment. The proposed use of the property is a K9 Resort facility, which is a luxury pet hotel. They've got numerous locations throughout the United States, including several in Pennsylvania. They offer boarding and daycare services for dogs. The dogs are primarily kept indoors, but there is a small fenced-in outdoor area where they are allowed some direct supervised play during daytime hours. And again, the applicant here is a franchisee that would be operating in this location. Mr. Tennant can tell you a lot more about the business operations for the proposed facility, but I'd like to go over the details of the text amendment that's before you this evening. So your Community Business Center zone permits a variety of business and commercial uses. It does not allow kennels. Kennels are currently only permitted in your agricultural and rural business zoning districts, and that's by special exception. There are criteria in your ordinance set forth in Section 270 5.2 JJ that must be met in order to operate a kennel in those rural districts that include minimum setbacks for outdoor runs and limited hours of operation. These criteria would be unduly restrictive, is our position, if they were applied to a commercial area like the one that we're proposing, that strictly handles the boarding of dogs and does not permit them to be outside during evening hours or without supervision. Your ordinance does make a distinction between boarding and breeding kennels, so what we are proposing to do in terms of our amendment would allow boarding kennels in the CBC district. It would not allow breeding kennels in the CBC district. Those would remain in the more rural districts. With the popularity of dog daycare services, which is a lot of what K9 provides, you have a new puppy or an old puppy, you would take the dog, drop it off in the morning while you go to work, pick them up at the end of the day. They also offer longer-term boarding, like you might do when you go on vacation, but it's our position that really this is the type of use that makes more sense to be in a commercial area, to be close to where people live and work, than as supposed to be outside of the commercial district in a really rural area. And really, part of it is a function of the way that kennels have evolved, from what we may have traditionally thought of them looking like to what is going to be described to you today, which is really a very professional facility that I think belongs in a commercial-zoned area. So we're suggesting that the zoning ordinance would be amended to permit boarding kennels by right in the Community Business Center District, subject to some specific criteria. So basically, what we've done is we've added to and modified the criteria that would apply to a boarding or breeding kennel to create a specific set of regulations that would layer on top of a boarding kennel that would be in the CBC zoning district. When we first started exploring the possibility of this use on the property, we met with staff and talked about the proposal with them. One of the main concerns raised by staff is to ensure that the use would be compatible with any adjoining residential uses, and to make sure that residential uses in the township were protected. As a result, we added a requirement that any boarding kennel within the CBC district must be located at least 500 feet from any existing dwelling or any land in a residential zoning district. In this case, the closest adjoining residential properties are along Urban Drive to the west. You can see that on the aerial map on the screen, and those are over 600 feet away. There would also be limited use of the outdoor run, so the outdoor space for the dogs would only be available between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. They would not be out at all during evening hours. Outdoor runs would be permitted to be set back 20 feet from lot lines. It's actually a greater setback in the rural district, which would be impractical, frankly, given the lot sizes in the CBC or commercial zoning districts, and we think is also unnecessary here, because in the rural district, there's less regulation in terms of the hours that the dogs can be outside. Again, the proposed amendment does not alter the regulations for breeding kennels. They remain as is. This is only for a boarding kennel. This has a very limited applicability, given all of the requirements that are in place, specifically the requirement of being located at least 500 feet from a residence or residential zoning district. We were only able to identify six properties in addition to our site where this could potentially be done in the CBC district. Three of them are located right along the same section of Centerville Road as we are, 111, 131, and 101 Centerville Road, so essentially the same location. Two are located in the 2100 block of Columbia Avenue. In that case, you're right across Columbia Avenue from Manor Township, and on the south side of Columbia Avenue, there's a kennel located in Manor Township in that same area. And then the third, 2440 Noel Drive, part of Lime Spring, and we think we're being a little generous in including that one. It likely would not be a fit for that location, but there would be the potential there as well. In terms of the chronology of this matter, again, as I mentioned, we started with dialogue with staff. We submitted our petition on March 6th. The Township Planning Commission did recommend approval on April 10th of the amendment. County Planning did not recommend approval on May 13th by what I would describe as a fractured vote. I think although the recommendation was ultimately not one of approval, the takeaway from that meeting was that county planning would have supported this as a conditional use, but not as a by-right use. While I can certainly appreciate the concerns they raised, which primarily related to impacts on residential property owners adjoining neighbors, again, there's such limited applicability of this in this particular zoning district, there are very few other chances for this to occur. So we really think to create that extra process as part of an application for a kennel in the CBC would not be necessary or appropriate, given the limited application of this amendment. So with that by way of background, I'm gonna have Kevin come forward and take you through the remainder of the slides and tell you a little bit more about the business. And then finally, I'm gonna have Haman come up representing- And then finally, I'm gonna have Haman come up representing ownership and talk a little bit about what he's looking to do in your community.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Tennant. I'm Vice President of Franchise Operations with K9 Resorts. I'm gonna take you through a little bit of the history of the company, what we're all about and our services, and then would be happy to answer questions. So the history of our company, we started in 2005 with two brothers that started a dog walking business in their neighborhood to prove to their parents that they were responsible enough to own a dog. Unfortunately, their parents did not agree. They did not allow them to own a dog, but they started a very successful dog walking business, which then turned into the brand as we are known as right now, K9 Resorts. The brothers themselves have over 20 years of pet care industry experience. We have 34 open resorts nationally. We just opened last weekend in Plano, Texas. And we currently have over 170 territories in 27 states across the United States. So our purpose is to provide a home away from home for dogs where dogs will love to play and stay, and customers will know that their dogs are cared for on a five-star level. We like to regard ourselves as the Ritz Carlton of dog resorts. We only do things, we only offer services that dogs enjoy. So we don't clip their nails. We don't do grooming services. We are not a retail establishment. We truly just enjoy inviting dogs into our facilities. They're in a very comfortable, relaxed environment where they enjoy going to. So we'll get a little bit into our services. We specialize in luxury boarding. Our specialty is cage-free boarding. So we've got three different layers of boarding accommodations. Our top of the line is our luxury suite. That's an eight-by-eight soundproofed room with a flat-screen television, all the amenities of home, coranda bedding, or an upgraded orthopedic bed if the owner so chooses. We have a house food that we offer to the dogs that is gentle on their stomachs. Dogs tend to be a little bit nervous when they're away from home. So we have a specialized formula, which is veterinarian-approved and prescribed to our brand that you cannot buy off the shelves. It's only available through a prescription. And it's also all-inclusive. So that means if your dog is staying with us overnight, they are also involved in our daycare services. Whether that is group playing, your dog would be evaluated by our staff. If they are comfortable in a group setting, then they will be in an open playroom all day long, supervised by our pet care techs. If they are not dog-friendly, if they don't get along with other dogs, we have other options, which was a private play option where that dog would have one-on-one playtimes with our trained staff. Our middle-of-the-range boarding is known as the executive suite. Those are five-by-seven enclosure, 35 square feet of open space. Again, no cage. Dog has free rein to move around throughout that space. Also has the same coranda bedding. And then our traditional boarding is our compartment boarding, and that's for dogs that are more comfortable in a close environment. They're maybe crate-trained at home, or these are puppies that need to be in a smaller space. We also offer doggy daycare. So as I mentioned, dogs will go through an evaluation process when they come into our canine facility. Doggy daycare offers a lot of benefits to dogs. Dogs are very social animals. They also tend to get very lonely when they're home alone all day long. I witnessed myself with my two dogs when I bring them to work. They have their friends that they meet up with in doggy daycare. It's almost like a high school clique where they see their friends on a daily basis. They all hang out with each other. It's better than the alternatives with bringing a stranger into your house. You may not know how much time that person is spending with your dog. You know, the dogs that come to a canine that are part of our daycare services are fully supervised. They're off-leash. They're off, you know, in an open room, separated by size. We have large dog daycare and small dog daycare. And it's great for these dogs to expel their energy and to stay in shape. If you flip to the page that has the golden retriever puppy, you see a picture of what our large dog daycare rooms look like. As I mentioned, our daycares are broken up by size, not by temperament. So we have our large dog group that is 30 pounds or over, or small dog groups is 30 pounds or under. As I mentioned also, every dog that enters the facility on their first day goes through an evaluation process. And our daycare rooms are fully supervised at all times. We have a company standard of a 1 to 25 dog ratio, human to dog ratio, that in our staffing model increases with the number of transactions, the number of dogs that are entering the building. As I mentioned, for dogs that are not approved for a group play, or if the owner chooses to give their dog a break and want to be in a personal playtime setting, we have that offering as well. And that is in a separate yard away from the outdoor play area where the group play dogs will play. And during, in that environment, it's about a 200, 300 square foot piece of the yard. They're playing tug-of-war, fetch, lots of belly rubs with our pet care techs during, in that playtime. We do offer bathing services. I did mention we don't do grooming, so we don't trim hair. We don't cut nails, anything like that, but we do offer baths. Dogs are very active when they play. They play with their mouths. They roll around on the ground. So we do have bathing services for our registered guests to come in. They can have a bath while they're in for daycare or for boarding. And we want to make sure that the dogs are going home smelling fresher than when they came in the doors. All right, so our operations, we have, on the first page of operations, we have lots of security measures that are mandatory in K9 Resorts. Video and camera surveillance, security systems, sprinkler systems, as well as smoke detector systems. We, it's mandatory for having pest control and local veterinary partnership, both with a local vet and an emergency vet. Also with local animal pet care partners, that could be a specialty pet boutique, that is a pet store, trainers, things like that. And we do require as a brand vaccine requirements of all dogs that enter the building for rabies, distemper, parvo, bordatella, and canine influenza. So what's important to know about K9 is all of our guests are preregistered. So they must be in our system as a client. We don't just allow anybody off the street to walk in that we've never met before or evaluated their dog before. Our checkout, our check-in and checkout is very quick because of our registration. So every guest that comes in for either our daycare services or for boarding must make a reservation. We know when that dog is coming in, we know all the details of that dog. So the transaction in the lobby, as well as the turnover in the parking lot, is very quick. So for a daycare check-in, it's less than 30 seconds. The owner walks in with their dog. Our CSR at the front desk brings the dog out to the daycare or to its boarding lodging, and the owner is on its way and out of the parking lot. Our boarding check-in is less than three minutes because again, our registration system has all of the information for feeding, medications, the length of stay, all of that stuff we already know already. It's literally just reviewing the details of the boarding stay, and the owner is on its way. We have mandatory hours of operation. So our daycare operations Monday through Friday operates from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The boarding, our boarding check-in times for during the week, Monday through Friday, is from 9:00 to 5:30. And that is designed by operations because our early morning drop-off between 7:00 and 9:00, there's the highest turnover for dogs coming in for daycare. And at the end of the day, that usually is busier from 5:30 to 7:00 before closing time. So that gives us that middle portion of the day to attest to those boarding clients that are coming in. On the weekends, we have boarding and daycare operating, and those are from the hours of 9:00 to 5:30. The seasonality chart just gives you an idea of how our business flows throughout the year. So the areas that are highlighted in red, that is a off-peak season for boarding. So we're more of a daycare model. So we're generally around 20% to 25% occupied from a boarding perspective, and it's more of a walk-in client for daycare rather than overnight boarding. The yellow areas are when there's that transition phase between spring breaks, Easter breaks, things like that that occur earlier in the year, and then again, leading out of the summer season around Labor Day. That's typically a mix transitional season. And those areas in green are our peak boarding season when the facilities are at capacity for boarding. So it runs generally around like a retail calendar. Whenever kids are out of school and the malls are the busiest, we also have that busy transaction timeframe. And the last slide I want to show you is just our typical delivery. So we don't get a lot of deliveries. It's usually UPS or FedEx truck, Amazon truck delivering our supplies to the building. There are not, there's no tractor trailers or anything that comes to deliver. It's usually a cargo van or a small delivery van to the building. I want to reference a little bit about our sanitation services. So we have, we had talked about having an outdoor area for the dogs to play in. That area is connected to the building. It's where the dogs get outside for fresh air. They run in a fully enclosed area with an eight-foot fence that has sound mitigating qualities. It's called Buff Tech. So it absorbs 98% of direct sound waves that hits it, which is great because, you know, dogs are, you know, tend to bark and things like that in the outdoor areas. We want to be good neighbors in every location that we're in. So we, it is a mandatory material that we use for outdoor areas. Our turf is also called canine grass. It is made specifically for our use for doggy daycare. It's got antimicrobial qualities to help mitigate any spread of odor or disease. And our cleaning protocols are very strict, one of the highest in the industry. We use hospital-grade cleaners. Two main ones that we use are Rescue, which is a hydrogen peroxide-based cleaner. That is hospital-grade. It's used in hospitals and in our vet clinics and in our use for daycare. And we use another material called Odor Pet, which is a bacterial enzyme that breaks down organic material that could cause odor or the spread of disease. Those items on this last slide here would be delivered on a weekly or monthly basis, depending on the uses of the building. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about our operations.
I don't have any questions specifically about your operations. As far as you had mentioned about your procedure is for all the dogs that come in, they must have their shots and vaccinations. Is that a state mandate for kennels?
It is, it varies by state. So we have brand requirements. These are the brand requirements for rabies, parvo, distemper. It is, canine influenza is not one of those mandatory vaccinations. We as a brand require it. Some locations, I could say, I think out in Denver, for example, veterinarians don't give that vaccination. So it's a recommendation, but not a requirement. Our brand requires these vaccinations, but if there was anything above and beyond that, we would obviously follow the rules of the local municipality or health department.
So my concern is obviously not with you because I feel like you guys are the Hilton of dog kennels, right? So, but we are doing a text amendment, which would allow other people to come in and run a similar business. So I don't, my only concern is that the dogs that come in to that kind of facility, number one, that they do have the proper vaccinations. And if we're not including it in this ordinance, is it included in the state regs? And that's kind of my question.
I have seen in the past specifically in some kind of licenses in Pennsylvania, our operating resorts, we have four operating resorts right now in the Philadelphia market. And the dog warden and the application for the kennel licenses do list the requirements of vaccinations that we must provide. We must have, we keep records in our reservation system, Ginger. And when they come for inspections, they do review every single one of those profiles to make sure the vaccinations are up to date. So there are local municipalities that do require those vaccinations, and we adhere to them and keep very diligent records of those.
And the second question I think would be for staff. I know we have a noise ordinance. That would be my secondary concern, and again, not for this particular facility, but for another location or a different operator. Do we feel like we're adequately covered for noise with what we're doing here?
Sorry, I came in for partway through his presentation, so I did miss part of it. We do have
Yeah, they're, I mean, they have soundproof rooms. They're good to go, right? They're, we're not worried about them. We have a text amendment though that allows other people to come in at a future date. Do we feel like our noise ordinance, are we covered with a facility that comes in that maybe is not as quite up to their standards or as responsible as they are? If we change this text amendment noise-wise, is there anything that we should be doing with the text amendment? And I apologize, this is late date. You know, I'm sure I would have raised this earlier, but is there anything that we need to do in addition to what's here for noise?
Not in my book. I think we're fine as is.
This is Nate. When reviewing this with the applicant, we did try to provide sufficient distances between residential uses to negate issues like noise.
And it's not just Nate, not just residential uses, but, you know, other businesses as well that would be in close proximity.
I guess the way that I would respond to that is we would still be subject to the noise ordinance like any other business or property owner in the township. You know, the other thing that has been interesting as we've gone through this process is, you know, I think there's just a change in thinking about dogs and how integrated they are with our everyday lives. I know at the Planning Commission, there was a concern raised, well, there's a hotel next door. Could that be disruptive? And we came to find out afterwards that hotel allows dogs. So I think, you know, there's a little bit of a change in thinking here in terms of how integrated they are to our everyday lives. But to say, if you were to have a problem business that would come in and they were violating the noise ordinance, I think you'd absolutely be within your right to enforce it.
The noise ordinance actually was generated at the time because of dogs. That was what created the original noise ordinance long before any of us were on the board. We call it the Bernie Kretsek noise ordinance because he had a noisy dog next door.
A question. What would be the maximum amount of, or maximum number of dogs that you may have?
So in this location being approximately 7,900 square feet, we would have about 70 lodgings for boarding. It would allow for probably around 85 to 90 at maximum capacity as far as overnight boarding. Again, that would be at full capacity. It sounds like we have a fan already. We have our first client on the Zoom there. So it would be around 85 to 90 would be the maximum at 100% capacity.
Thank you.
How many employees would you estimate you're gonna need for this location?
We would have, we would employ right off the bat about 25 full-time equivalent employees. And then as the business grew, there would be in addition to that. So in our existing resorts, we've got anywhere from our flagship location in Fanwood that opened in 2005. They have about 50 employees. A new resort will open up with 25 and then add as the business increases.
Where's the closest resort to us?
Closest to here, we've got four operating resorts in Bethlehem, Malvern, let's see, Horsum, and in Audubon. Those are our four operating in Pennsylvania. I guess the closest one would be Malvern to here. And we have four, including this one in development for right now, for this year.
So you had proposed a sound barrier fence, which is nice. The question is for Nate. What if, again, following along the lines of Mr. Walesworth, what type of screening do we, are we looking at for other facilities? Obviously, what they're proposing is a very high-level sound barrier wall, pretty much. That's not your norm. So what would we be looking at for screening if another facility wanted?
Right now, we haven't looked at particular screening types for this, and I don't believe it came up in our discussions with revising our screening and buffering requirements here recently. It's certainly something we can look at.
So currently, there's no screening in the revised ordinance. So currently there's no screening in, in the revised ordinance.
No, I'm saying that's, I was reading-
It's not part of what we're proposing. It would just be deferring to the base zoning and screening requirements in that district. So there's no enhanced buffering.
Again, to support, you know, uh, my fellow supervisors and, and really what you're proposing. I mean, this isn't really about this operation. This would be an operation somewhere else in the township, in the CBC area that, that, uh, maybe isn't quite as diligent as, this applicant would be with, uh, from a noise standpoint. And the, the time to do something with that would be, I think now when we're proposing a change.
Is there, is there a particular urgency timewise here?
Yeah, the property is under contract and they're looking to move forward with acquiring the property. You know, I guess what I can say in response is there are, there are so few possible places this could go other than this location in the CBC. Again, like the properties on either side of this. You know, if they wanted to do this, they could, which I think is unlikely. And then again, there's two properties near the Travelodge on Columbia Avenue. I mean, that's really what we're talking about in terms of the scope. So I do understand the concerns, but I think the likelihood of this occurring elsewhere in the CBC district pursuant to this amendment is very, very low.
And this is Nate again. When, when staff reviewed the locations, uh, we, we came up even shorter than what Miss Shank did. Uh, the Columbia wa- address says, I don't believe would fit. You know, they're near another place like this in Manor Township, but that place is also listed as a residence. And then the Noel Drive, the Lime Spring Apartments are too close to the property on Noel. So that wouldn't apply either. So it's really only the Centerville properties. And I, I thought there was one on, near Main Street in East Pete. Four total.
So question for our lawyer. If a minor change was made tonight, would that cause an issue with advertising requirements? What's the de minimis limit here for any changes to a text amendment?
Well, I think depending on the nature of the change, it could potentially have to go back to the planning commission and have them review it again. And come back through the public hearing process.
Go back to our planning.
Correct. And potentially county planning too.
Which goes back into your original timeline, discussion on what you're asking.
Mr. Russell, is your question on that for the screening and buffering? Is that what you're referencing, a change?
No, just, I, I understand how the case law works. I was kind of throwing a softball out there a little bit, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it seems like it would be easy to make a minor change in this moment, but fortunately can have the effect of restarting the process, depending on what the nature of the change is.
Nate, the screening and buffering requirements that were questioned, those would be modified in the screening and buffering portion of the zoning ordinance, not within this text amendment. Is that correct?
Uh, we can look to add it to the amendment where, um, we're making to the ordinance.
So those requirements are already in draft.
There, there's two possible places this could end up with, with a specific use criteria that the applicant is requesting be amended, or we could add it to the screening and buffering requirements. And we can, uh, catch this with that amendment.
I'm, I think my preference, and I won't speak for the board, would be screening and buffering, which would be outside of this. And making it a little bit broader than just for dog kennels. And so something that would be the potential for noise, uh, kind of working that into the screening, because we've had a number of noise complaints with industrial and other things where we can be a little bit smarter with how we're doing our screening.
I think that's great. Yeah.
That makes sense. Yeah, I agree.
I do just want to give Hamon a, a brief opportunity to come up and introduce himself a little bit and, and tell you what he's excited about, uh, in joining this community.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Hamon and, uh, this is my brother-in-law Richie right here, also my business partner. Uh, I want to first of all, thank you guys for your time, uh, you know, to, to hear us out and hear our, uh, potential project here out. Honestly, I, I really don't have much to say about the project. These guys have done a wonderful job. I think really what I wanted to just portray to you guys is, you know, when we walked in today, you know, and like I was saying, I was joking a little earlier that we were really here to support the, the police department. I really meant that because I, uh, was a firefighter for eleven years at my local, um, township that I grew up in Lansing, small little town, Lansing, New York. You know, so these type of interactions and moments is what I grew up in and what I'm used to. And it quickly became evident to me. I turned around to Claudia right away and I said, man, you know, I don't know if they'll approve us, but we've approved them because we would love to be in a community like this, um, where you guys really cherish, you know, um, your own and, you know, care for your own. And we, we just want you to know, we may not be residents here, um, but we will be outstanding model, um, business owners. Whatever we can do to help with the community, um, you know, support the community, be there. Aside from obviously holding up to, you know, all the rules and regulations, making sure, you know, that we're doing the best practice, holding up to the brand standards of canine resorts. You know, but I just wanted to introduce ourselves, uh, a little bit, you know, Richie and I come from a hospitality background, uh, a real estate development background. So we own human hotels. And, um, you know, and, and also now are into the, um, the, the dog hotel business, you know. So that's a little bit about, you know, our background, um, you know, wherever we've gone with any of our projects, re- most recent one in Cortland, New York, um, which is right near Lansing where I grew up. You know, we did, uh, a renovation of a hotel there, uh, that used to be a huge staple in the community, especially with the police department and the auxiliary, they would host a lot of their events there. And soon as we took over in two thousand and one over there, we kept hearing, sorry, two thousand and twenty-one. You know, and it, there was a three, three-year process. We kept hearing all these stories about how it used to be a great place for everyone to go to and the community to gather. Um, and it quickly became, you know, important to us to make sure that we brought that back to the community. So we worked very hard to implement those things there. And, um, and now the community is starting to host events there again. And, you know, it's really come back to life. We brought it back to life. So those are the type of impacts that we have, aside from, you know, the economic impacts and everything. Um, is we really like to get involved with the community, let them know that we're here, that we want to be a part of it. And, and that we will respect, you know, um, everybody that's in the community and make sure we do the best we can, you know, as, as a business owner. But I, and I'm open to any questions, you know, happy to, you know, dive deeper into, you know, some of our background or anything else that you guys would like to know.
I mean, for me, I, I think it's a great new business. It's great to hear that there's going to be twenty-five more people employed in East Hempfield. And, you know, I'm in favor of it. I think Mr. Russell has addressed a way to solve the concerns that we raised. So that's where I'm at.
Anything else from the, from the board?
Yeah, if everything was approved as soon as possible, when would this be opening?
So yeah, so actually, I mean, the plans with the, uh, with the architectural firm, which is a huge architectural firm, RHJ, right out of, um, the King of Prussia area. They've actually already been created. So we're ready to rock and roll really. Soon as, you know, if, if we were to get an approval, um, closing would be, you know, pretty, pretty short, you know, timeframe from now. And then soon as we close, I mean, we've, we've got the plans, they're approved, they're ready to go. So we would start, you know, construction right away. And we have a construction background. We, 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 you know, GC all our projects. You know, so we oversee construction ourselves. We've done it multiple times. So we know how to be quick and efficient, you know, and, and not be disruptive either, um, to, to our neighbors. So we, we would, we would be underway pretty quickly, um, you know, if everything was-
So it's just a building apartment, basically.
Cause all, that, that's- The building is very conducive to the model, to the project. There's really not a whole lot that we have to do, especially on the exterior, except for a facade facelift, you know, on the model, you know, and the, and the brand, right? But really from the inside, it's, it's a pretty plug and play situation where, you know, there's not going to be a lot going on. So it really is a great location, you know, for, for the, for the brand, for the model, um, and I think for the community as well.
Sounds positive for you and us. So let's see what, uh, what happens from here. Anything else from the board? Okay. How about from the audience? Anyone here like to make a comment? How about Zoom?
There is no one on Zoom, but I do have some information to answer Mr. Wigglesworth's question about vaccination. The Act eighteen of two thousand and twenty-three of the General Assembly does require vaccination rec- certified vaccination records be provided. And they have standards for the licensure of the kennels with the requirements for those. So that concern is covered in state law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Seeing no additional questions at this point, we'll, uh, we'll close the hearing at eight o'clock and move on our, to our agenda. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Consent agenda addresses the approval of routine and repetitive business matters that tend to need little or no review, discussion or deliberation. Consent agenda items are provided to all board members for review in advance of the meeting. Is there any comment on the cassette agenda from the board?
To expedite things, I will be abstaining if we just want to do one overall vote because I missed the last meeting for meeting then purposes.
All right. Thank you.
That's what I'm saying. If I abstain, just do the one.
Okay. Okay. On the consent agenda, I'll hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through F.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, three, four, zero, with one abstention. Okay. Next up is our action items. And first on the agenda of our action items is a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four point oh one, a zoning text amendment to allow a kennel use as a use by right in the community business center district and provide for additional use regulations specific to kennels. Any? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Brubaker. Do we have any additional discussion this evening on this project?
Just glad to have you guys here.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations and welcome.
Welcome to our community. And Nate, just a homework assignment about the, uh, screening. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Claudia.
There you go.
Okay. Next up is a, a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven to amend the township's five thirty-seven plan to allow a private pumping station.
I have no background on this agenda item for you this evening. And Harry is not worth with us.
Okay. In case, well, in case everyone hasn't noticed, our township manager is not here this evening.
Maybe Nate.
So this is, this is Nate. The, this is for, uh, the development on Marriott Avenue that you've already seen and conditionally approved, uh, consisting of, I believe twelve townhouses and two duplexes. They're working through the remaining items they need to finalize this land development plan. And DEP is requiring them to do a full sewage planning module because of a private pumping station that they have to, uh, facilitate, rotate, hooking up to the sewer.
Why are they doing grinder pumps or something to go uphill?
Yes. And I, I guess this is a newer thing that DEP is requiring, um, a full planning module for due to the, operations and maintenance requirements, making sure that all gets documented appropriately.
This is a pretty routine thing.
The resolution that you are approving this evening is a DEP form. It's pre- created and it's simply filled out by the township in reference to the land development plan and sewage planning module submitted by the applicant.
Okay. I think this is a project that we've all been in favor of. And so let's, at this point, let's keep it, it moving. I'll hear a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven to amend the township's five thirty-seven plan to allow a private pumping station. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Roger. Uh, a second from Mr. Brubaker.
That was Mr. Johnson.
Oh, Mr. Johnson. I'm sorry. Okay. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth. I got this all wrong. Let's, let's back up. Okay. I'm, motion from Mr. Russell and a second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Landowners guarantee agreement.
All right, these ones I'm ready for.
All right.
So, uh, action item C and actually, uh, action item E are the same agreements that we, uh, discussed at a previous meeting. These are, um, for the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation and for Growing Greener Grant that are simply, um, the township signing on to agree as the landowner to participate in the projects. These are, um, stream restoration and drainage way, uh, projects that are occurring within the township.
Okay. And we're the landowner in these agreements.
Correct.
And that grantee is, just for the record.
Right. So the, for the first one, it's the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation. And then for, um, letter E, when we get there's the, um,
Steiman Foundation.
Steiman Foundation. Thank you.
So we, if we were to look on there through the agreement, you'll find out that the grantee is responsible for the maintenance and all those other, so not the landowner.
The grantee. Yes. So that's the, that's the, uh,
Little Conestoga and Steiman. Kind of what they had already promised.
Okay.
Just clarifying that.
Sounds good. All right. Any, any additional comment for the board? Any comment from the audience? Hearing none, I'll hear a motion to authorize signature on the landowners' grantee agreement for planned stream restoration at the Shriner Station site. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion parry, carries five to four, five to zero, five to zero. Next up, Harrisburg Pike Drainage Way. Motion to authorize the submission of a Growing Greener Grant application. And again, this would be a fairly routine, uh, submission to help with the, cover the cost of this drainage way on Harrisburg Pike.
Correct. And in this case, this is our drainage way we're applying for a grant in order to fund the stormwater project that's on our list.
And this is a commitment to addressing the flooding from tropical storm like many years ago now. If you guys remember, this is one of the flood areas that, um, occurred and went during that storm. Due primarily to all the debris that washed down because it hadn't been maintained.
Any other comment from the board? Comment from the audience? Hearing none, I'll hear a motion to authorize the submission of a Growing Greener Grant application for the Harrisburg Pike Drainage Way. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. A motion from Mr. Russell and second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. And finally, landowners' grantee agreement, a motion to authorize signature on the landowners' grantee agreement for the Harrisburg Pike Drainage Way.
Same grant submission, second form.
This is the Steiman found, this is the one with Steiman?
No, this continues to be an East Hempfield Township project. The same, the same project, same grant submission, a separate form that has to be-
Okay. Now I understand. Any questions from the board?
No, someone just goes over what the maintenance responsibilities are, which we talked about is with, uh, the, um, applicant, not with landowner. the, um, applicant, not with landowner.
Okay. Any question, any other additional questions from the board? Not anything from the audience. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to authorize signature on the Landover Grantee Agreement for the Harrisburg Pike Drainage Way.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second?
Second.
From Mr. Brewbaker. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Brewbaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. All right. Next up is old business. Do we have any old business to discuss this evening? Okay. Hearing none, let's move to new business. Any new business this evening?
That will be a public comment.
That will be public comment. We'll get there pretty quick. All right. All right. Hearing none, uh, traffic commission. Uh, traffic commission met this evening. Um, we discussed the traffic reports, approved minutes, uh, discussed briefly, uh, a consideration on, uh, speed bumps in the Farmingdale Barcrest area. We took no, no real action at this point. Uh, we're going to try to address it at our next traffic meeting. Anything else, Scott? Okay. Um, and that's, that was about it. Meeting, uh, meeting ended at, uh, approximately six thirty. Next up, public comment? Now?
It does not. If you go to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Gretchen Wendell. I'm at two-two-three-six Marietta. I think I met most of you a while back when my house was hit by a DHL truck. So you look familiar. I'm here because, and I don't know a lot about this, but, um, I learned recently that Lancaster was a sanctuary city. And I'm kind of want to, um, ask you guys to vote East Hempfield to be a non-sanctuary city. I'm concerned about it because I moved here from California a couple of years ago and, um, I've seen San Francisco really go downhill. And I'd really like to see this East Hempfield protected. Um, can we vote on that now? Or what's the, how does that work? Cause I just saw that Efforta passed something. So I thought maybe we could do it now.
This, this is not something that we can do tonight.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Okay.
We can, uh, listen to you.
Sure.
Uh, why we should do it.
Okay.
And at this point, take it, take it under consideration.
Okay.
We, we, uh, on some level, I think we've all talked about this. Not collectively, but, uh, it is something that most of us are considering. Um, I think the issue for us is what's the proper way to do it? Uh, I've gone on record and said that I support the, uh, county proclamation. But I believe that when we get to it, uh, our, our proclamation on this issue will look different from, uh, the, the county, and it'll look different from the proclamation made by, uh, Peckway Township.
Okay.
Both of which, both of which we have copies of.
Sure.
So, um, that's, that's about, that's where we are.
Do you need the citizens to speak out or is it?
Be loved when citizens speak out.
Okay. Does it have to go to vote? Like, do you guys vote on it or do, do the citizens or how does?
Well, we'll make a vote on a resolution of either support, if we're going to support the, uh, the, uh, the proclamation by the county. Um, we're not, again, I can only speak for myself, um, uh, not in favor of sanctuary cities personally, but, anything that gets done here gets done in the meeting room. That's why, um, I'm somewhat circumspect about next deck, next steps. But, uh, we're looking at it. I believe we'll wind up doing something on it. Probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. So nothing needs to be done from, for me right now. Cause you guys will kind of handle it.
You're done, you're doing what we would like you to see.
Okay.
Happen.
Okay. If you need anything else, just, you have my number.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to let you know, the County, Lancaster County Association Township Supervisors as a body, um, endorse the county commissioners.
Yeah.
Uh, resolution, which that represented all the, the townships, that's non-binding. Um, because that's, that's just an association, but that gives you.
County, right?
Was that?
That's the county, correct?
No, Lancaster County Association Township Supervisors represents all the townships.
Ah, I see.
In the county. It's not county government, it's local government. And we did adopt a motion that supported the county commissioners' resolution just to give you a pulse for the entire, all the local governments minus the city at this point.
I see.
Um, we're involved in that. So, and the boroughs are not part of our association too. It's just townships.
Okay. Well, let me know if there's anything I can do. Thank you.
I would just add to it, like it, it did come up before, uh, uh, at a prior meeting. We are aware of it. I think generally we were, we're supportive of it. I think we were, number one, I think it was great that, um, uh, the association voted for it. I think we were looking for guidance from them. Were they going to support the commissioners or were they going to tweak it? Um, so I think you're going to see something, but to what our chairman just said, we can't do it tonight. This has to be advertised. Everybody gets a chance to weigh in on it. Um, when we're going to do it. So everybody will get plenty of notice. Um, and it'll be, you know, thought out and forward for everyone, but you heard from two already. I'm in favor of it as well.
Good. Well, maybe in a couple of weeks, we'll, we'll see what happens. Great. Thank you.
Anyone else for pending public comment? Wendy?
Well, I was glad I could be here tonight and add to the residents, you know, uh, acknowledging our police officers because we are indeed fortunate to have such a great force here. Um, I feel safe here. And it was, it, it was for that reason that I brought up the, the non-sanctuary status.
Can you please state your name and address for them?
I'm sorry. Wendy Velopis, nine hundred Hunter's Path.
Okay.
So I was here on, uh, March twentieth and again on April third and, and brought it up because I, I, I would hate to see our, our officers, you know, drawn into things that we haven't seen before because people are kind of coming out from the city and we don't know what we're going to get, you know? I, I mean, it's a, it's an unknown. And maybe it would, wouldn't be a problem, but just to take preventative measures. I think, you know, in talking to the commissioners at different meetings that I've been at, it sounds like the reason for it is so that it's a proactive way of saying, hey, we are, we are non-sanctuary in this township. We are going to abide by the laws. We are going to call in ICE if, if a crime's committed and we find out that it, you know, it's undocumented. So, you know, once again, I just want to, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to hear what you just shared with this resident because, um, I, I've, you know, I've watched what Peckway did. I watched what Columbia did. I actually have, uh, Efforta's resolution, if you like it. I made copies of it. Um, I know the person who went to the meeting in Efforta and, and asked, you know, that it, it get taken care of. And I know you guys have been busy with, you know, what, what happened at some of the more recent meetings. So, um, but the sooner we can get that done, I think, you know, for a lot of people that I've talked to in the community, they would just feel more comfortable. Our biggest worry out here would be squatters, you know, and, and this is walkable, right? People can walk from the city out to here. And I, again, I think they'd rather sleep in somebody's barn or on somebody's grassy farm than on a city sidewalk. So it's again, just a preventative measure. And with that, I'll just, if you don't mind, can I give you the copy of?
Absolutely. Bring him forward.
And they all were different. I know it's Columbia's. That place was different. But basically, we all said the same thing. They're going to comply with federal agency.
Well, basically, basically we took an oath of office to abide by all federal, state, and local laws. And so I, I don't understand the picking and choosing which laws you follow and don't follow at this point. If you don't like a law, you change it.
Exactly. It seems like laws aren't.
Yeah. And a, a comment on that, uh, depending on how the resolutions are worded, if it's, uh, following laws, you know, that's one thing, but then some of the resolutions I've read have been quite political in nature. So it can be pretty controversial depending on the wording of the document.
Mr. Johnson? Never mind.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a resident on Zoom waiting to make public comment.
Okay. Hannah?
Good.
Good evening.
Hi, um, I'm Hannah. I live at twenty-eight, twelve Nolte Road. I'm sorry, I couldn't attend in person. I'm sure this has come up before, but my husband and I were wondering about altering the ordinance on backyard chickens. Um, we, I had chickens, uh, in our previous place of residence. We have two young children who are too young to have a job, but we believe in the importance of teaching them, if you care for something and you work hard for something, you get something from it. So you take care of chickens, you get some eggs. Um, I have, I did look at all of the, I have them printed here, the, um, surrounding municipalities and what they do with backyard chickens. Quite a few of them, a majority do have specific ordinances and rules in place to have backyard chickens. Uh, a lot of the, quite a few of the community members I've talked to expressed that they would either not mind if people had chickens or, or have said that they would like to have their own backyard chickens. So I just wanted to see what you guys had to say.
Well, I remember that issue came up when I, soon after I came on the board and I was surprised that how many people came out to discuss this issue. And for me, originally, I think I was like, well, what does it matter? Um, but we did have a couple of farmers that came out and spoke to this and had some serious concerns about it. Um, as far as, um, rules and regulations that they have to follow, um, and millions of dollars invested. And it gave me pause just to say, okay, I'm not against it, but there is a bigger issue. And I do think our farmers have, um, a legit, legitimate concern, so to speak, about this. Um, when they're looking at like the avian flu and things that they have to do to protect against, uh, that, that kind of stuff. And so what seemed to me to be a very, very simple issue turned into a complicated issue all of a sudden. And I would just say that I would throw that out there.
I did see that, um, East Petersburg, they had looked at, um, chickens like everybody else. And that was a big concern for them with the avian flu, which is why they decided to not go ahead with backyard chickens. Now, I'm not a farmer, obviously. Um, talking with a couple of people who work very closely with livestock, it sounds like, um, it's definitely more of a concern for big farms, big ones that have lots of chickens as opposed to owning, um, like totally separate handful of chickens that don't interact with any other birds. But, um, I think that is definitely a very valid point to bring up. It is a big concern.
Yeah, the other, we, we had part with, uh, some of the neighbors, uh, was when the rooster got mixed into the mix too.
Right.
So there was some noise issues with, with, that some neighbors that were really got fired up, um, with.
Oh, yeah.
Another neighbor.
Yeah, absolutely. I know, um, I think everyone that allows chickens other than man or township, they're pretty strict. No roosters, which I very firmly believe with. Roosters, they're allowed.
Okay. Well, I'll admit that I know very little about this subject. And, uh, we'll get with Nate and see what, uh, see what the issues are. And we'll communicate with you and let you know, uh, what our position is and what is doable and what won't be doable. So.
Okay. Yeah, I'm willing to do, um, any legwork that you guys need. I'm willing to provide any information or talk to anybody, um, to just help you guys out. And yeah, see what, what I can do to help you guys out, um, to reach a, a good educated decision for the community.
Why, why don't you reach out to our, uh, planning and zoning person, uh, Nate?
If, if it's on the website, I'll find it.
Nate, Nate Sturgis, I'm sorry. I, um, getting tired.
It's fine.
Yeah, get with him and, and, uh, and we'll follow up directly with him on our end also.
Got it. Yeah, thank you.
All right, Hannah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else for the cause? Good of the cause. Okay. Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-six.
Okay. I wasn't ready to do the managers. Nope, you adjourned it. I'm good.